For instance.
Councilmember Hornick. Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Silva.
Here.
Marking.
Here. Any reordering of the agenda? None this evening. Uh, public comments, I have two and I see that. Mr. Dorwin is also filling one out, so we will start with A.J. Tormann.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for your time. Thanks to the mayor for the halftime cycle cop on West Highway two forty six.
And I got another one. I've got two now.
Oh, God bless.
No, only took me two years.
Anyway, I do have to, this is pretty good. Anyway, I was given credit for the first half cycle by you. You said I harassed you for two years. For the record, it was one year, but probably.
Oh, like two. No, we've been working on that for probably two years.
But we, we gave you know it.
Right?
As per that raceway, we need a full-time black and white out there, and you've done that. Our speed studies show forty to fifty percent of traffic is still speeding. I trust that hundred thirty thousand in the general fund will soon pay for full-time traffic enforcement. Thanks to staff to actually get Caltrans to do something. The reflectors on the mania, wow, that was good. Now please get Caltrans to remove the sixty-five mile per hour sun right outside our city limits. Our forty-five mile per section serves as nothing but a launchpad. Forty-five to sixty-five in mere seconds. It just encourages people both footed like that. Safe sane posts have recorded over twelve thousand clicks. Public safety has never been on in our public's mind. Please have staff add West High Hill two forty-six as a special project on our fine city website. We need to see the progress in the words of Representative Hudson Hornick to skinny the road and make changes to stop the racing. Updates to the circulation element. A timetable when S.B.C. gets a proposal for funding and everything else needed to get Caltrans to work, but we appreciate those meetings. Uh, invites have been sent to Hudson Hornick, Mayor King and Walt to speak to a few hundred concerned seniors, April third at Ranch Club. We hope you do attend. I respectfully remind you that public safety is highlighted many times in the general plan, especially for bicyclists and pedestrians. Thank you so much. To that end, common sense tells us not to add to the problem of more and more traffic. I waited for the two red lights by CDS to get through that much maligned intersection at two forty-six and Murray on Wednesday at eleven AM already. We have about a thousand more units planned for the area. I don't know what your public response is going to be. Large-scale projects like the hub are unacceptable if at all. A building the size of a bonds of fifty units efficient game will probably not allow. And I know we've got UCSB grads up there and you got a concern about the steelhead trout. In Zaka Creek as I am. I'm a UCSB grad. I love those fish. Perhaps everyone needs to reread the general plan and the, uh, the sea squat. Elements in protecting our environment. And I know the city loves those bed taxes, but the Hyatt project with thirty-four rooms on the line that Murray Road and, and then Apollo Village of fifty-nine units adjacent. These developers need to downsize to even get serious consideration. Now, as for the bad idea of the day, some of you are proposing ballot measure that doubles the population. Just say no, the urban boundary proposal is nothing but a Trojan horse. We are not fooled. State mandates for affordable housing is easily met with the land we have. We have room for sixteen hundred and fifty units. There is industrial land out by the horses that could be rezoned. It's nothing but a trick to encourage urban sprawl and develop our profits. I know that, just like in the In-N-Out charade, you will put our residents first. Just give urban boundary extension the boot. Save us all the bother of a no. All campaign. Let's put our resources into fixing our infrastructure and making our roads safe. Don't put the cart before the horse. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Corenio. This will be regarding Meals on Wheels.
Good evening. Um, my name is Christina Corenio and I reside at Ranch Club Mobile Estates and I'm currently serving as president of our homeowners group. And tonight I'm here with that cap on. Uh, we've had, we first of all want to thank the city, uh, for all the, all that you do right now for the current seniors on the Meals and Meals program. And, and I know that they are going to be coming to you for, um, possible, um, emergency funds or some other way that you can creatively find a way to, to help these shut-in seniors. But, um, I have one of them in my own home, uh, my stepdad who, who relies on that meal every single day. And he just, it's, it's not only his sustenance, but it's also his, his soul that it's feeding. Cause the chef down there really takes it a care and, and really makes these meals look pretty. And so it gives him something to look up to or look forward to in addition to that. And I'd also like to, while I'm here, thank you for, um, everything that you've been doing to help with the traffic and, and, and enforcement is to me the number one thing. So that, thank you, thank you again for all, all of your efforts, Mr. King, and then the rest of the council is rough. Or Mayor King, apologies. And I have extended invitations to you and, uh, Mr. Hornick. And, uh, I go understand that Mr. Wolf cannot be there, but we have our meeting on, um, April thirteenth. It's a Saturday morning, um, at ten thirty and we've got the first half of our agenda just specifically for our elected officials. So I certainly hope you come out and hear from others that are thinking and feeling maybe like I do, maybe not. Maybe there are other people that are feeling like there are other priorities. But in general, when I address you, I, I know that it's not just for my own, but sometimes there are other people sharing with me and I'm just passing on their concerns and, and that me and their voices as well. So thank you again.
Okay, thanks for coming in. Thank you. Mr. Dorwin.
I was gonna speak at, uh, agenda item five.
Okay. Which one are you referring to? You talking about a consent calendar number five?
You know, agenda ID five. That's the acceptance.
That's.
That's number nine.
That's why I was confused. Okay. Uh, having no other public comment, we're gonna move on to consent calendar. Some minutes of February twenty-two, twenty twenty-four, regular city council meeting. List of claims to be approved and ratified for payment date for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Monthly treasurers report January thirty-first, twenty-four. Financial report for second quarter ending in December thirty-first, twenty-three. Acceptance of Village Park improvements project. Awards of construction contract to the S.Y.V.C.O.C.D.B.C. One forty, Highway two forty-six. Uh, T.I. Projects Heating H-Vac. And consideration of affordable housing elements for the, uh, four thirty and four forty Central Avenue Project. And contract with Cosmot Companies to prepare economic and market analysis to study, to, study to support comprehensive general plan update and urban growth boundary update. I'd move for approval.
I'll second.
Linda.
Hey, Councilmembers Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silva.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, Scotty, presentations.
Um, no presentations from staff.
Okay. Uh, moving on to item number nine, resolution number twenty-four zero four. Resolution of the City Council, City of Beelton, California, approving one-time extension. Twenty-four TE zero one, request for financial development plan sixteen FDP zero six located at the south terminus of Industrial Way. Sessions parcel number zero nine nine six nine zero zero four eight. And the lead on this is going to be our planning director, Andrea Kiefer.
Uh, good evening, Mayor King and members of city council. Before you this evening is the second and final request for a time extension for final development plan sixteen FDP O-six, uh, for the Beelton Hub project located at the end of Industrial Way. The final development was, the plan was originally approved on February twenty-second, twenty eighteen, and the project has previously received one. A one-one-year time extension. Uh, final development plans have an initial time limit of five years and the Beelton Municipal Code allows up to two one-year time extensions on final development plans. So again, this is the final extension allowed for this project per the Beelton Municipal Code. Um, the final development plan was originally set to expire on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. However, the first one-year time extension was approved by the city council, extending the entitlements through February twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. So the second one-year time extension was filed with the city on January nineteenth of this year in advance of the date of expiration. Um, at a public hearing held by the Planning Commission on February fifteenth of this year, the Planning Commission adopted a resolution recommending city council approval of the time extension. And if approved by the city council this evening, the entitlements for the final development plan would be valid through February twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Although a tentative tract map was originally approved with the final development plan, the tentative tract map is not a part of, of the consideration this evening as the tentative tract map is valid through August twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. The property owner is in attendance this evening and has been working toward obtaining required permits to begin work on the site associated with the development project. And as such, staff considers this time extension to be reasonable. Uh, and with that recommendation is that city council consider adoption of resolution twenty-four oh four, approving a one-year time extension for the final development plan for the Beelton Hub project. Uh, that concludes my report and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Bring a pack to the council for questions from staff.
No questions.
No questions. David?
No questions.
Okay, I will go out to the public for comment. I will start with John Dorwin.
Thank you, John Dorwin, World for Six Flags Circled Beelton Residence since nineteen eighty-eight. The city needs to deny the extension for approval until the construction access and emergency access issues contained within the conditions of approval are resolved with the Rancho de Mari one homeowners who own the access rights across their common area between Shadow Mountain Drive and the project site. The conditions of approval, absent a super majority of homeowner consent for the conditions relating to construction and access would be illegal under California Civil Code Section eight oh seven. The city continues with a cart before the horse situation as to approval conditions. You can't allow the easement to be overburdened by subdivision approval until you have consent or have obtained rights of access to this project from the public street system. The fundamental perceptual problem for the city and the developer is who has the power to grant access from the east to the project site for construction and/or emergency access. We believe there's been substantial progress made on the issue of the property line and the fence. However, it appears that a majority of the homeowners will not consent to construction access down Shadow Mountain Drive across the association common area of private property consistent with the conditions of approval. This goes back to who owns what, what is private property, what is public property. Condition sixty in attachments four and five of the resolution elements on map, pardon me, easements on map. Any public or private easement required for access shall be shown on the parcel map. Consit- condition seventy, map recording. The final map and all applicable public and private easements must be recorded with the county recorder. Condition one ten, eastern off-site trail shall require easements from RDM and the City of Beelton prior to the issuance of the first occupancy permit. Condition one twelve, construction timing. And a temporary gate at the emergency access point shall be installed. Condition one thirteen, construction access. In the event that access is need to occur through the emergency access gate on an occasional basis. The homeowner is not gonna consent to these conditions. This isn't my first rodeo. There's a project over in Saulbank called Nyborg. The developer was a guy by the name of Chip Handley. When Nyborg needed a secondary access beyond the one they had on the two forty-six, which is still a killer today. They needed to come up Fifth Street and they needed to take the property of a gentleman by the name of Bob Stevens, who became my client. The way the subdivision map act is set up, if you need access over private property, the city delegates the condemnation authority to the developer and then the developer goes through condemnation. Chip Handley didn't have the luxury of the time for condemnation. So he ended up buying out my client. My client controlled both sides of Fifth Street going towards this center of solving. So that's the way this should have been handled and could have been handled. But now we are here granting extensions for conditions. And there are twelve of them. Uh, one fourteen, one seventeen, one eighteen, one nineteen, one twenty-two, one twenty-eight, one thirty-seven. All relating to access over private property, which Rancho de Mari Homeowners Association members have not consented to. Members have not consented to. And that's a violation of our civil rights. Our rights to private property. And uh. The city needs to stop what it's doing. And take a look at who owns what. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mister Dorwin. Mister St. George, did you want to say something?
No, I just did, yeah, yes. Over the last three years, I've living in the valley. I have now really trying to understand what the valley stands for. And I think you'll be seeing by some of the future projects we're gonna be bringing in here soon. Where my stand is and what my love for the valley is. Working on some projects right now that I know has nothing to do with this. Um, but it does indirectly. I I feel Beelton is extremely important key. For the valley to remain devout. Uh, as it is right now. I'm I'm also against expanding the city lines as well. I think Beelton's great the way it is. This project, I can assure you that my heart is into it for the right reasons. This isn't for development. So I've done with my housing, I build housing, but I'm not here to try to make money off Beelton. But that's all I need to say. And that that's the honesty I'm true. You'll see that with the projects and I'm bringing forward. That that's it.
Okay, thank you. I will bring it back to council for further discussion. John. Well. David.
I'm okay.
Okay. Any um, anything further from staff?
Unless the council has questions for us.
Okay, no, all right, then I will bring it back and entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution number twenty four dash oh four. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Beelton, California, approving a one year time extension. Request for final development plan sixteen dash FDP dash zero six located at the Southern Terminus. Of Industrial Way on accessories assessors parcel number zero nine nine dash six nine zero dash zero four eight.
I'll second. Linda.
Hey, Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silva.
Hi.
No. Okay. That passed and we will move on to uh, number ten ordinance number twenty four zero one and ordinance of the City Council, City of Beulah, California, adding Beelton Municipal Code, section nineteen to ten. One forty, providing for certification for review. Uh, of certain discretionary land use planning proposals for. Immediate city council consideration, introduction and first reading, and this once again will be Andrea Kiefer.
Uh, good evening, Mayor King and members of city council. Uh, before you this evening is a draft ordinance pertaining to providing for certification for review of certain discretionary land use planning proposals for immediate consideration by the city council. The Beelton Municipal Code governs the roles and responsibility of the Planning Commission and city council as it pertains to discretionary planning applications. Existing Beelton Municipal Code requires that the Planning Commission first hear the discretionary planning application before it may be reviewed by the city council. Uh, the Beelton Municipal Code further provides uh, for appeals to the city council by an applicant or an aggrieved party. Occasionally, there may be certain discretionary actions that have considerations beyond normal planning and zoning issues that are typically dealt with by the Planning Commission. Um. For which it is important to have city council provide direction or exercise discretionary authority on the matter at hand. Uh, so this is what is being considered this evening with the draft ordinance. If an ordinance is adopted, it would essentially be uh, provide an additional process. Within the Beelton Municipal Code in terms of governing how discretionary planning applications are able to be reviewed. Uh, at two prior public hearings, uh, they were were held uh, with the Planning Commission in consideration of this draft ordinance. At the first public hearing, the Planning Commission did have concerns with the ordinance as written and therefore recommended denial to the city council. However, at that same meeting, the Planning Commission also indicated that if the language in the draft ordinance was amended to provide further clarification on intent limitations and future implementation of the ordinance. They would consider making a recommendation of approval to the city council on the matter. So staff then revised the language of the draft ordinance and held a second public hearing presenting the revised draft ordinance language. And at the conclusion of the second public hearing with the Planning Commission, uh, the Planning Commission voted to recommend denial of the ordinance to the city council as revised. Given that the Planning Commission considered two versions of the draft ordinance, both versions have been included in your packet this evening uh, for consideration. The first entitled original is to indicate the first version reviewed by the Planning Commission and the second entitled revised is to indicate the second version, which was reviewed by the Planning Commission. So the intent this evening is that the city council considered considers both versions of the draft ordinance and determine which, if any, draft ordinance language. They wish to adopt. Um, the city council should also consider making additional revisions to the language in the draft ordinance as they see appropriate. Or uh, choose to decline the to introduce an ordinance and let the existing process remain. Um, as currently prescribed by the Beelton Municipal Code. So um, in summary, the purpose of the ordinance would be to address those discretionary planning applications that involve a matter of such significance that it should be heard by the city council. This process is not meant to be utilized on a regular basis and is intended only to be used in very limited circumstances for very specific documented purposes. Um, that are not otherwise anticipated um, in the current Beelton Municipal Code. So both the original and revised draft ordinance generally include the same framework with some differences in one, who can apply and when. And two, uh, the scope of what can be considered. So I won't go into too much detail here because much of the information is explained in detail in your staff reports and through the text of the draft ordinance. But I do want to touch on a couple few important points. So the intent is that of the draft ordinance is that any city council member, the city attorney or the city manager would be able to initiate the process. Um, the process could be initiated either before or after a decision making body has acted on the application, but must be initiated at least one day prior to the end of the appeal period. Um, the original version allows any of the seven listings listed persons to initiate the process either before or after. Um, the decision on the project, however, the revised version only allows the city manager or city attorney to initiate the process before a decision on the project has been made. And city council members in the revised version could only initiate the process after a decision by the decision decision making body has been made. So the original version doesn't explicitly limit the scope of what can be reviewed by the city council once the certification for review process has been initiated. However, in the revised version, um, a limitation on the scope of what is being considered is that is set out more clearly. Um, in that the certificate certification for review process. Um, is initiated before the action of the decision making body. The city council should hold a hearing to make only a determination on the specific matter identified in the request. Then the project would be remanded back to the Planning Commission for their consideration and decision on the project. Conversely, in the revised version, if the pro- process is initiated after the action of the decision making body. Then the city council should consider should make a determination on the specific matter at hand and then make a decision on the project based upon that determination. So that just kind of is a very broad summary of what is contained in the draft ordinance and of course, there are more details and information in the draft ordinance. In ordinance itself and in the staff report. And I, uh, Scott and or uh, Greg are available for any questions at the conclusion of my report. Um, with that, however, as the city council has requested such an ordinance be prepared. Um, it should consider adoption of ordinance number twenty four dash zero one, which would be adding Beelton Municipal Code, section nineteen ten, one forty. Providing for this certification review process. What I'd like to note here as well is that the Planning Commission recommended denial of the ordinance in either form. Um, and should the city council adopt an ordinance, it should consider which which ordinance language to adopt, the original or the revised language and any additional revised. Um, revisions to either version as deemed appropriate. So that concludes my report and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and bring to uh, council for any questions on staff. John.
Yeah, the um. So both both times planning commission were um, didn't like this and I originally didn't like it at all because I think that planning commission's got to have. Some importance and and uh. So that's just the way. Not a question. That's not a question. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Lisa.
No questions.
David.
No questions.
No questions.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Anything from the public, anyone on Zoom, anyone in public like to say anything about this? Nope. All right, I will bring it back uh, for further discussion. To the council. So basically what we have to do is either yes or no on this and it's gonna be either the the original or the revised ordinance. From what I understand, we have to make a decision on. Further discussion?
Well, initially, we would have to. Is uh. Approve it or deny it. Right, and then if we approved it, then we would.
No.
Pick a.
We either go with the original or the advised and we can deny both of those as well.
So are we looking for discussion or?
Discussion on which one we would want to vote on first, or we can just deny this altogether, so. Um, you can, if you have an opinion about the original draft, say yes, I like that, or the revised draft, uh, yes, I like that.
So.
And if we have a consensus on either one of those, then we will vote on this ordinance.
Okay, so I think that the revised draft gives the city council more space. To become involved in planning decisions and planning use that we didn't have. Or wouldn't have absent it. And in the event that. Bigger things. Come up where we want to review. The larger impact to the city as a whole, this gives us that ability where we don't have it now, if that if I'm understanding correctly, so.
It does, and it also does does something else, it limits. It limits the review before the planning commission makes a decision. It limits that call to the city manager or city attorney. And and I'll give you an example from another city, we have an urban growth boundary, so we don't have a sphere of influence and we don't have annexations here. But in other cities that have this. If a project would normally go to the planning commission and have three or four hearings, but it would have to include an annexation and pre zoning. The city manager or city attorney could say, I wanna I wanna kick this to the council because the council's gonna make the decision. Do we even want to consider annexation and pre zoning right now, or are we not in favor of annexation? And then this, then the planning commission isn't wasting three or four hearings going through a process. And then sending a recommendation to you only to have a hearing one, you guys say no. So it's important to have the tool, but um, to your point, ma'am, I think number two really does. It it kind of sets the rules, um, the city manager or city attorney. Um, prior to a decision would be sending it to you for a very discreet one issue. You know, discuss this issue, not discuss the whole project. Once a decision's been made, all that this is is letting you guys do what amounts to an appeal. Without it being an appeal under the law, which then allows you who feels it's important enough for the five of you to consider to be part of the consideration. Uh, I'm strongly in favor of it as a tool for the council on which way you go is totally up to you, ma'am.
Yeah, so in light of that information, uh, if you're asking for my opinion, my opinion would be the modified version.
Okay.
I do have questions now. So.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so, uh, Greg, Mister Murphy, is your understanding that a lot of other municipalities do have ordinances like that?
Y- yes, uh, the vast majority do and it it came down, most cities used to say that a council member could appeal. Uh, a matter without paying the fee. And then some cases came down in the courts in between two thousand and two thousand and ten. Saying that if a council member appealed, then an appeal per your own code says you're an aggrieved party. Well, if you're aggrieved, then you can't rule on it, so they kicked all the council members out, so between, say, two thousand and ten. And two thousand and seventeen, a lot of cities went with exactly this type of ordinance. The specifics are different, but the tool is important. Like I said, it lets you be one to say, hey, I'd like the council to look at this without having to recuse yourself.
And and I might have missed this second question because I was late and my apologies, I don't know if you told everybody, but my my three year old had an injury, um. Which is why I was late, but uh. So is this is the revised version after talking to uh, planning commission about this ordinance and and. She getting some feedback and is that why we have a revised version or?
The revised version was prepared um, in an attempt to respond to some of the planning commission's original. Comments that came out of the first public hearing. Uh, they indicated to the planning director that they would be open to reconsidering this ordinance. If certain changes were made, they gave us some concerns specifically that they had. And uh, the planning director and I worked it out and and. Believe we've addressed those concerns, however, when we brought it back to the planning commission, they felt that they. It it still did not meet with their approval and so they recommended denial of it at this time.
Thank you. And well, I I think uh, I think the city could use it, I think it'd be a good tool for the city council to have, um, I I think if if the. City staff went back and and revised it pursuant to planning commission direction, then I'd be for the revised version as well.
Okay, so I'm seeing the two of you for the revised version, David.
Um, I think that it's always useful for us to have the most tools that we have in our tool belt for it and I agree with with uh, what uh, Mister Murphy said on. This is a chance for us to have cognizance of larger implications of any decision, so I'm in favor of version two, the revised version.
John.
No, no problem.
Okay, um, and I think that, yes, the revised version, uh, it has a little bit more latitude to it and. I think that th- there's no council, including this one that's up here at the current time, that would abuse this uh, and try to undermine planning commission, I think that this is just going to be used for a tool. That um, if something, say, um. Substantial um. Project came up and the city council really didn't have any input on that and the project went forward, you know, the planning commission doesn't get um. Does get the finger pointed at them over projects that the the city disapproves of, so I think that. Um, the city councils have some discretion to be able to deny a project that possibly was previously approved by the planning commission. Um, so I I would also like to go uh, with the version number two, I think that gives us the biggest amount of latitude. Uh, any other input from staff?
Unless there are further questions from the council, no?
No, I will bring it back to the council for possible motion and be specific about which version.
I move to approve ordinance number twenty four oh one, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Beelton, California, adding Beelton Municipal Code, section nineteen point ten point one forty, the second revised version. Providing for certification for review of certain discretionary land use planning proposals for immediate city council consideration.
Second.
Linda.
Hey, Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Hornick.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Go.
Vice Mayor Silva.
Hi.
And Mayor King.
Hi.
Okay, that passes and we will move on to council member comments or items. Um, Elisa, do you have council member comments or items?
Yes, sir, I do not.
Hudson.
Uh, I did not at this time.
John.
Um. I just wanted to uh, say I went to the uh, the Live Fast Rally, which was a fundraiser for. Uh, for a veteran, uh, the veteran, they had fundraised for uh. And they raised like nine thousand dollars for, and it was down at Shigrow Mount Brewery and it was uh, it was it was kind of a threat of rain, so it slowed down a lot of the crowd, but uh. They had a, you know, a good um. A good bunch showed up and they were all uh. Um, raising money for for a guy that deserved it, one of our vets, and I wanted to thank uh. I know we we had some discussion about the the uh, event and I wanted to thank uh, everybody for letting it go smoothly. And uh, again, it was nice, nice event. And looking forward to the Chili Fest this weekend.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Thank you.
Uh. Vice Mayor Silva.
Yes, just wanted to um, thank, we uh, are able to attend the Empty Bowls fundraiser that was put on by Community Clayworks and um. The Bethania Church. I just wanted to bring up the fact that they were referencing the people who are utilizing their uh, food distribution services. And the age bracket that's being serviced are, they have, they were saying their oldest person utilizing their food services is about ninety three. With their youngest being thirteen, who are visiting on a daily or weekly basis, so I think we just need to be cognizant that when we discuss food insecurity in the valley, there's. There's a really high, high proportion of our population who are living from meal to meal, and I just encourage us to keep kind of thinking about those issues, and I appreciate everyone who's brought that up. Today at the meeting as well, but um, we just need to keep an eye on that, because there's a number of our community members who are really struggling to make their ends meet, so. Just thank you to all the community members who are working towards that.
Okay, thank you for that. And. For those of you that missed the press conference, uh, City of Buellton did have a press conference about um. Maximum enforcement coordination between the Sheriff's Department and the Highway Patrol. Uh, fortunately, through uh. Lengthy negotiation. Uh, we were able to get a part-time motor officer. Um, he will be working for the City of Buellton for traffic enforcement. Um, primarily on the two forty-six, but we will also have him target some areas, especially during school hours. Um, on McMurray and some of the uh, side streets. Uh, what's the last one? Sycamore, some of those. Where people are speeding down those streets. Um, and and I'll tell you what, I'll I'll give you a quick story. When I first came on the highway patrol, I was in Monterey, and we had the same kind of people complaining. About speeding around schools, and the very people that were complaining got tickets from us. So sometimes be careful what you wish for, or at least slow down. Yeah, and all addition to that, after we got the first motorcycle officer, which is Derek Taylor. Um, we had another motorcycle sergeant that had interest in also doing some enforcement here, so. Now we're going to have two uh, sheriff's department motorcycle officers patrolling our city. So hopefully, and I've had some of the staff people say that they have already noticed that. Some of the people coming out of law and poker slowing down because they are seeing that motorcycle officer. I mean, it may stop them for a no front license plate, but they didn't know that. They think. Everybody out there gets stopped for speeding, so we're at least what we call in the in the the law enforcement, we're showing the pain. Hey?
Hey, I want to comment on that, the uh, just an anecdote, the the motorcycle was parked. Under a tree on the sidewalk by industrial way.
Oh, yeah.
So he was uh, he's out there.
Oh, yeah, and he's, he's, he knows where to hide. Come on, he's a motor cop. You should have seen some places I used to hide. Uh, okay, moving on, written communications. Scott, anything?
None this evening.
Uh, committee reports. Alicia?
None.
Hudson?
Nothing.
You're the man. David?
Nope.
John? Yeah, go ahead, you do it.
Uh, we had um, we had um. An Aquatics Foundation meeting yesterday and had the plans of the pool locations and. The entrances, and we all kind of went over, reviewed, you know, the different logistics of where the pools are sitting and the parking lots, and. So it's a, it's a real thing they're working on. There's going to be, you know, it'll be more public. Uh, talking about what's coming in and where it's going, so um. Be on the lookout, and we're going to do some more fundraising, and anybody that you know that is interested in the aquatics program or anything, um. Have them uh, get interested, and we're going to be looking for a lot of people to participate in this project, so.
Thank you. Yes, and I'll dovetail on that. I want the same meeting, and moving forward, um, what it, what it's going to take now is, uh, the Aquatics Foundation really has. Narrowed narrowed everything down to funding. Uh, the plans are in, you know, the the design is in, we have an architect. Uh, nineteen six is the builder um, and architect, and they have done a lot of projects uh, here in California in the past. So we feel confident that they could facilitate this, um, putting the pool into the ground, so to speak. Um, and now it's down to funding, so everybody out there that's watching, I know there's tens of thousands of you out there watching this. Uh, and those of you here in the room, you know, it's going to take money. So if you want to contribute, it's going to be the San Diego Valley. Aquatics Foundation, anybody you know, you send out emails, you know. You you know, I I figured it out, uh, four hundred dollars from every person here in the valley, and then we can put that pool in the ground. So um, some could give more, some could give less, so that's, that's what it's going to take moving forward is funding, okay? Uh, anything else, somebody? Well, I estimated uh, twenty thousand here in the valley, it would be four hundred dollars per person, that includes your kids, so you're about twelve hundred dollars. Sorry. Oh, sixteen, sorry. Sorry, there's, I forgot the other one, I forgot the other one. Okay, no more, um, no more committee reports, we'll move on to business items. Review of Andrew, annual comprehensive financial report, A C F R for fiscal year June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And this will be our finance director, Chanel Zamora.
Mayor King and members of the city council, uh, staff is pleased to present you its annual comprehensive financial report, also known as the ACFOR. For the fiscal year beginning, beginning July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Um, the city prepares an ACFOR, although uh, just a basic annual annual financial report is required. Um, the ACFOR provides more detail and provides more transparency for the community. And talks more about the city's financial condition. Since its preparation, staff has submitted the ACFOR to the GFOA. Um, for an award, uh, and the city has won ten consecutive awards. So uh, if the city receives the award for this ACFOR that's submitted, that would be the eleventh consecutive one. Um, and we usually find out if we receive this award in summer, late fall period. Uh, the ACFOR is divided into three sections. Uh, but city staff is responsible for the introduction and the statistical portion. Uh, we work with our auditors to prepare the financial section, which has the manager's discussion and analysis. Basic financial statements, uh, the fund financial statements, along with notes to those financial statements, and most importantly, the independent auditor's report. Uh, the auditors express an opinion that the city's financial statements for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Are fair fairly stated in conformity with GAAP. Moss Levy and Hardtime have performed an audit of the financial statements. Staff recommends that the city council review and file the ACFOR for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Um, I am open to any questions the city council may have, and we also have on Zoom our auditor, Adam Geis. And he is also available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I will bring it back to council for any questions of staff. Alicia?
No questions. Good job.
No, David?
No questions.
John?
No questions.
And I do not have any questions either. I will go out to the public. Anybody on Zoom for this, or anybody in the audience like to speak on this issue? Nope, I'll bring it back to staff for um, a possible motion.
Uh, for staff or council?
Uh, I will go back to staff if you have a further input.
I I do have a little input. I, just if I, if I could, I'd ask Mr. Geis to to come online with us here. And just give for the benefit of the council and uh, the public a little explanation as to what um. Uh, as to what an un-unmodified or clean opinion means in the opinion of our auditors.
Okay, thank you, sir, Mr. Geis, please.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, so yeah, uh, unmodified opinion, um, that's referring to the opinion letter at the front of the audit. Uh, and basically what that means is we were able to uh, come out to the city. Um, we were able to get all of the information that we needed. Um, and as we went through and audited all the numbers and all the information provided by staff. Um, we found all of the information uh, to be accurate, and that we believe all of the the statements in the report are accurately presented.
Okay, thank you, sir. Just for clarification, is there a, a better or a more favorable opinion you can give of our financial reporting?
No, the the, the unmodified, nice glamorous name, um, is the uh, is the best kind of audit opinion.
Thank you, I just needed to give our finance department a few more kudos. Appreciate it.
Is that, is that essentially saying, sir, that that their finance department could not be doing a better job of our accounting?
Uh, it means that as we went through, and they.
This would be eleven years in a row, so I think they know what they're doing. Okay, uh, bring it back to council for further discussion or a possible motion.
Are we filing, or do we need?
We need a motion to file. Okay, never mind. Anybody opposed to that? Nope, okay, it is received and filed. Uh, ch-ch-ch-ch, number twelve, and this is going to be consideration of. What's that?
You're welcome.
Yeah, hope to get eleven years in a row.
Thank you, Adam.
Okay, consideration of appointment to the planning commission. Okay, in the interim to this, so we had two applicants, one of them dropped out. Um, I think in the interest of the uh, public and diversity for this particular position. That we put this off to another um, city council. Meeting possibly in um, first part of April. Could you bring that back, Scott, April? Is that enough time, or you need mid-April?
I as, I assume you're looking for time to see if we can.
Time to see if we could find more applicants, because we did have one dropout, and this would just be um. Uh, I think a disservice to the public to not go back out to the public and ask people, especially in your own districts, if they would like to have someone. On the planning commission, at least have a little competition in this position.
I would suggest at least one month, so the first meeting in April would be, would be uh, plenty of time for that, I think.
Okay.
Is that? Does that meet our requirements time-wise? Can we do, if we're going to renotice the the position, does that give enough time for the first meeting in April?
Uh, but we make it the second, second meeting in April.
Can I respectfully disagree? I don't necessarily think, I think that we have done. A very good job on city social media and on personal social media of of city council members. To go out there and advertise that this position is available, and I know there aren't people necessarily chomping at the bit, breaking down doors to be a part of this, and I think that. The fact that one person had to withdraw should not. Proclude the other person who took the time out and put the effort in and was on time and did all that. I feel like we are penalizing that person. Because someone else had an issue to not consider their application and to make it so that basically we're saying. We won't, we won't accept your appointment because there's no one to compare you to. I feel like it does a disservice to the community members that are stepping up, and it is not easy to put your hat in in the ring, and it's. Stressful to have everything ready, to attend a meeting, to have these conversations, to be told, sorry, there's not somebody else to consider with you, so we're not going to consider your appointment. I think it. It sends maybe not a very supportive message. Unless, unless we think as a council that we didn't do a good job of advertising the position, and I I think we have. I just would be interested to hear what you guys have to say on that.
Okay.
I have a question. So um, this appointment, though, is is to fill the vacancy we have, and it will be up for. Real appointment in ten months or eight months or so, right?
Probably so.
So if we kick it out a month, then we're basically shortening this timeframe for just, this appointment is literally for eight months or something, right?
Well, December of twenty-four.
Okay, so nine months. Okay, so I mean, that's, so that's my concern, right? I mean, I I get what you're saying, I think you're right, and I actually would like to address, and I was planning on addressing this when we discussed the item more. Um, I I was hoping we could do a little more to to sort of advertise the position, but uh, to Alicia's point, I think that, yes, um, our applicant, you know, went through steps. And this is an appointment for nine months. I think it would behoove the planning commission to have uh, somebody fill that position.
Okay.
It's a, it was my, my opinion not to have this position filled, so I would, um, I like having the two. And then, and I think we should take more time to uh. To uh, at, at some point, we were going to try to appoint our own planning commissions or commissioners, change the whole thing, so. Um, I would second what Dave would uh, turn, put this out for more people and. If we can get a little more interest, but I didn't know that much about it, so.
Yeah, and I, and I think that um, just with having two people that applied to this, I think that there probably was some disconnect between our advertisement, and this is nothing. Nothing personal to the applicant. This is just that I think that with only having two people applying for this, that there really wasn't. Um, enough time maybe, or uh, advertisement for people to try to get onto the planning commission. Um, I I think it would be a disservice to the public to not at least have a little bit more competition than this. Uh, that you get, and 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 if we could push it to the first meeting in April, you know, that would give. Sufficient time for somebody to kind of get their feet wet on the planning commission, whoever that is, before the election in November. So um, uh, I just would like to give one more bite of the apple before we. And before I let David speak, uh. Uh, but that's, that's just my opinion, and I think that we need to do a better job of going out to uh, the public and getting some. Some more applicants for this, and now I will go to, go ahead.
Follow up, sorry, David, if you're going to speak and cutting you off, but uh, what what other steps will we take to advertise? That's, that's the next question.
Well, I never saw anything on like Facebook, social media, that kind of stuff, and a lot of people don't, and I see people shaking their heads, no, they didn't see it either. And if we go out to things I have, like Homes at Ballard Canyon is something that even I could advertise on. Uh, because I don't think people really got the word out that there was an opening for the planning, um, for the planning department. Uh, we could go out to um. There are some other um, websites, I'm sure David knows them, that we can go out to and and at least say, direct people. I know because you're a computer guy, because you always fix my computer, so I know that you've been on it. Um, that we could go out to some of these other organizations and groups in the valley, especially in Facebook, to get some people at least, and say. I'm directing you towards the city's website to apply for this position. That's just the point I'm making. I don't think it got advertised enough. With only two people applying for this position. Because normally we get about five or six.
But I think it, okay, sorry, go ahead, sorry.
Um, a few points I just wanted to make is, I think historically, though, if I can think of the last three planning commission appointments we've ever dealt with. There was three applications for two positions and four applications for three positions, if I recall correct. Is that correct, Scott, when we've gone out to to market?
That sounds about right, yes.
And so in this situation, this kind of averages out to what you would assume of two, two applications to one. So I do think that. In one situation, I don't think that we've at least historically seen that great, so I could, you could make the argument that there's been maybe about four years of poor marketing, if we have the metrics fall that way. The other piece that I do want to agree with Hudson and Alicia on is that I think that, you know, maybe we want to argue that we as a council could have done greater with advertisement, but. It's going to be harder to convince someone to take the time to go through an interview process, to learn the situation. To then be told, now it's an instead of an eight-month applicant or appointment, it's a seven-month or anything of that sort. And so I think that with the fact that we have one applicant who followed the rules. Found it out, it's clearly was marketed enough for at least two people to know about it. It was noticed in the standards that we would go with. I would make the argument that. If there is one person who is still willing to be considered for an appointment, we have a duty to review and barring any concern about the qualifications. It shouldn't be thought that we could maybe hunt for a better one. It should be, we work with what we've had applied, and we respect the process that's taken place.
I would agree with that, and is it something that we make a motion, or is it consensus? How, what is the process for moving forward with this?
Well, if the consensus is not to go, not to go back out to advertise for this, then we will vote on this issue and this applicant.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think we should vote on this applicant. Um, and so I would, I don't know if denying your motion or voting to deny your motion to continue, but that's what I would say. And I would also, you know, if we can. In comments, look at our advertising process, or in another eight months, we're going to be, or six months, or whenever it is to advertise these positions again.
Okay. It appears that there is a consensus to move forward with this item, uh, so we will go ahead and do that. So our applicant is, and our only single applicant is. And I don't have it up front of me, sorry, my computer keeps going black. What's, what's the name of the?
Mr. Silva, could you get on that, please?
Now we have a speech.
It's Daniel Contreras.
Daniel Contreras, yes.
And Daniel, would you like to come up and say something?
Honorable mayor and distinguished council members. Uh, thank you so much for the opportunity to be considered at this uh, by the mission department. The mission, I understand that uh, there's a lot of uh. There's a lot of responsibility that comes with this, but I also want to let you know that uh, my background history, I have twenty years in the industry of. Construction engineering management with heavy civil engineering as my emphasis and background. I currently have served fifteen years in the public sector. Uh, currently serve in the county of Satop Arbor as capital division manager. And I'm team of fifteen project managers, uh, spearheading the capital improvement plan and our capital uh. Division Management, uh, Capital Projects Department. Uh, before that, I worked for the second largest unified school district, which is L U S D as a senior. Project engineer. project engineer, uh managing uh uh a multitude of modernization projects from AD compliance to modernization of uh brand-new buildings to retrofitting uh existing uh structural structural elements uh that founded us at LAUSD. Before that, I worked five years in the public sector, uh in the private sector, excuse me, as a project engineer, project manager, uh solely working for Heavy Civil, uh did a lot of light rail for the Los Angeles Metropolitan District. Uh, so I feel that a lot of that and knowing some of the ins and outs of the regulations, knowing some of the background history of Sequel uh master planning, programming, I think it puts me at a good position for this for for this responsibility. Again, uh I think I act as, in this position, I'll be acting as an advisory board. Uh, I'll be doing decision on land use, uh decision assistance of the policies and plans in place, uh advocate for the best interest of the community as a whole, uh balance uh the balance, the ability of knowing stacks, requirements, and juridistic, juridistic, jurid- sorry. Juridist-
Jurisdictional.
Juridistic.
We knew what you meant.
Yeah. And most of all, and most importantly, is making decisions based on facts. Uh, and bringing that recommendation, those advices back to you as as the body, uh it's, I'm not, I understand I'm not in a position of making decisions as a whole for the county that, I mean, as a city, that's for you guys to bear, unfortunately or fortunately, but for me is to give you the best advice and the best recommendation based on what I know and what I have. Uh, again, I'm a, I'm a member, a resident of the city of Beelton. Uh, moved up here from Whittier, California, where I served in that community as a uptown Whittier Association ad hoc member. I also was a candidate for the planning commission in the city of Whittier, of which I had to deny for because of my move up here, which was a good move, uh especially for my family and my two kids. Uh, and also, I've always been involved in my community. Uh, at heart, I'm a public servant. I'm a servant leader, and I think this is a great position and a great opportunity for me to serve my community. So if you guys don't have any further questions or need any further qualifications, let me know. I'm here to answer anything willingly, and I thank you all for the opportunity to uh consider for this candidacy.
Hey, thank you. Have you ever been to Whittier?
Whittier, California.
Yeah, you ever been to Whittier? The traffic sucks.
Well, it's funny you have to say that, it does, but you know what? Whittier is so similar to Beelton that it's still, it's one of the last cities in the LA County that still has that small-town feel. And we're right next to the point of the pointy hills.
Yeah.
Right, and so we still get that very small-town feel with that LA touch.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Vibe.
Called freeway, freeway traffic.
Yeah, one of the good things I could get out of a six or five, travel another ten minutes, you should be, but there's a reason for it. I'm away from the big city life, but
Yeah.
Um, you know, an opportunity for the county came up here, I started to take it. We've been fantasizing about living up here in Santa Barbara County. Um, we, we were trying to live in carpentry, but you know, we made a better decision and kind of got away further. And now settled here at home at in Beelton, and this is where we're uh really setting our seeds and our roots. Uh, at the very end of the day, it's not about me, it's about my food, but it's, they have a better opportunity and just have a better environment for them. Knowing where I'm coming from, and if you guys go, well, I'll leave it at that. But uh I I do miss my small-town feel, but I'm getting my fix here at least.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you. Question, go ahead.
I think you came from Whittier to Beelton?
Whittier, too.
And if you, and how did you find Beelton?
Long story short, uh me and my now-wife were dating for a long time, and within those fifteen years of dating, uh we would travel up here as a tourist. Uh, and this slowly and surely every weekend, we'll come up here for an hour, for an hour drive, two-hour drive, and now it's, now since time's passed, it's it's longer time to get up here, but back then, just take about two, I shouldn't say that, but two, Mary. Police officer, but
Yeah, I'll do the math on you.
I know, that's
He's like, it's only an hour.
You can't break tickets right now, actually, you're okay.
So we still come up here for the weekends, uh we just fell in love with how the vibe, you know, the environment. Uh, and just the, and the honest truth is just the, the people out here will really like will really accept them, you know, uh and we're really like, hey, you should melt up here, and we're like, yeah, we're big city folks, right? What are we gonna do up here? But then, little by little, we understood the the love for the city, the love for the valley and and uh as a whole, so. And the interesting part is the ag, I really uh enjoy the ag part about Beelton, you know, this huge space between city and the small town, and then this ag, all these hills, these mountains, you know, uh horses around where I live, I, they wake me up because they're always annoying or it's just, it's special, so we, we just went for it. We, like I said, I had an opportunity for a job out here. My wife now uh found a great career path here as well, so we're uh playing our roots here and trying to just be a great source of our community.
I must read something wrong, but it sounded like you just came right out of UCSB.
No.
There was a, a lot of, a lot of the verbiage here, sounds like it's right off the campus.
Oh.
So.
Cali-Mon beach, uh, I'm a dirtbag.
Uh, what, wha- what's your feelings on um high-density versus single-family?
Well, it's a very complicated issue at this moment.
Right.
And uh I think uh there's a very distinct balance that needs to happen. Uh, I get that there's an opportunity here right now, uh of some of the environments that you guys have in regards to that, but high-density versus uh single-family, I'm, I would say that it's a balance for me right now. I I myself live in a high-density area, and I used to be a single-family owner, so I know that relationship between having your own backyard, having that that space versus that space that's shared. Um, so, right now, uh, I don't know if I have to give you a deliberation or or give you uh more what I need for, but there's a perfect balance that needs to happen, and it's pretty, uh, it's a pretty tight narrow between knowing that we have to comply with some high-density volume housing at the moment because the need for it, but also know that we can't steer away from what makes this environment as well as as well-being, as important as it is, and a lot of the single-family home traps, you know, people come here to have that that American dream, right, that single-family home, uh and not be barred against a high-density volume apartment complexes. Uh, there's a place for it, and we have to distinguish where that place is at.
The reason I'm saying that is because that project is behind Albertson's, there's twice as many residents on three acres than there is in my neighborhood of nine acres. So when you start, so that's kind of a fine line, what you're talking about. Okay, I am gonna, uh, any other questions? For Mr. Contreras?
Yeah, Mr. Contreras, first of all, let me say thank you for applying and thank you for putting together a thoughtful application and for being willing to serve a community. It's it's great to have people. Uh, can you guys hear me okay? No? I was just thanking Mr. Contreras for for filling out the application, for being here today, and I know it takes a lot just to sort of, you know, ante up your chips and and say I want to, I want to contribute, so thank you for that. Um, I was wondering though, reading your application, um, how familiar are you with the Beelton's general plan, and do you have any thoughts on on our general plan at all?
Well, as your general plan right now, uh uh you're actually starting to live it, uh you have an influx of tourism that you want to capture. You also have your avenue of the flags downtown that you really want to encapsulate, uh as you have in the general plan. That turned into a real downtown Mecca. Uh, I really understand that and understand the dynamic behind that small-town feel and the economic impact that that may have in the city. Uh, I know funding, as I work for the county, it's always in the shoes, so we want to make sure we have responsible funding, and that's a real diamond in the rough right now. I mean, I go down avenue of the flags a little time and say, hey, how can we better develop this? Uh, I believe you're up for, if I'm mistaken, from what I saw, I saw you just revised your housing element plan as well, so. Um, I think Beelton right now is at a real positive crossroads.
Uh-huh.
And you guys are uh as a city at a point of inflection where, where can we go with this? We have this diamond in the rough, one of the last ones besides and I'll be impartial, is Los Alamos, right? They're, they're about to go through something like that, too, because I know there's some development issues happening there as well that you could really emphasize Beelton as a tourist, but uh location or hotspot, but also be respectful of what you already have and ingrained, and what makes Beelton this is the ag land and, you know, the hometown feel, the small hometown feel, so.
So. Um. Okay, do you have any, do you see any challenges coming, uh, built into the next ten years, or do you have any ideas where you, you think Beelton should go?
Uh, the housing.
Housing mandate.
Is a real challenge, I think, for a lot of people, a lot of council offices, uh uh it's a, it's a real fine line, uh what the state is mandating and what you could take as a city and implement.
Right.
Uh, especially with, you know, your zoning and how, you know, we want to protect that ag land as well, but we got to kind of fulfill the mandate from the state right now, complete the housing element, and you know, um maybe in a couple of years that I foresee it hasn't happened here, but you know, uh it's happening everywhere else, and it's about time, but that's gonna hit Beelton, but the homeless issue as well, you know, that's always ever-moving.
Yeah.
And we sometimes don't think that it's never gonna happen here. How how do we deal with that and the impact it has on our communities, you know, uh what research we have to do for that, you know? Uh, we went through it in Whittier, and it was tough, you know? And I think the, being part of the homeless consortium in Whittier, as a member there, but in the public, it was a tough challenge of how to advocate for that and and how to advocate for our community as well.
Hmm, okay, thank you, Daniel.
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you for getting up here. I know it's never easy, no matter how often you do it with work or professionally. Thank you for being here. Thank you for making a very well-thought-out, very well-written application, and your credentials are stellar, and I just appreciate you stepping up even when it's not a full term and being willing to serve the community that you are becoming a part of, so thank you for doing that.
Appreciate that.
Sean.
And um, and quite, you know, we have this urban growth boundary coming up, and um I found out from Mr. Tarmant today that we have room for sixteen hundred more units in town, and I don't know where we would put them, but I think we're gonna need to go um horizontally instead of vertically. That's the, what the whole I think what we're trying to talk about, spreading out a little bit, not going up with, and if they, if they mandated even though sixteen hundred more units in town, there's gonna have to go up, we're gonna have high-rises or whatever, or we're gonna have to go sideways um as far as urban growth boundary. I don't know how you feel about that or what your vision is on, on that.
Well, personally, at this moment, I I gotta look into that a little bit deeper. Uh, it's not something I have too much uh background with, but I know that, you know, it's tough on a city and it's tough on our community members trying to push those limits, right? We're getting to that point where, uh, you know, the top button is gonna pop, what do we do about that, right? Do we get it tailored and tailored or you know, how do, how do we deal with that situation? But for me right now, I, you know, I really respect the small-town feel. I really respect the, that we also need to accommodate for, you know, the affordable housing as well, and right now pushing those limits, it's a real uh just in terms of how far we could go out with that horizontally.
You live in the highest density in town, so you should, um, welcome to town. Yeah, I'm I'm glad you made a decision to come up here and and thrilled that you decided Beelton was a nice place to be in.
Yeah.
You know, you need a little more time to assimilate maybe, but we're, you'll, you'll, you'll blend in eventually.
I appreciate that. I, just a little more time to look at it and the the proper, to make the proper decision.
There's a lot, yeah, there's a lot to know. Thank you. And again, I appreciate.
David, you have any questions?
No, I just think that it's a, I really appreciate Mr. Contreras's thoughtful answers, and I think that when we're discussing such a truncated term like this, having someone who has this background and this ability to hit the ground running is a real asset, and I'm I'm a big fan of diversification of perspectives, and so I think that Mr. Contreras would be able to bring a very dynamic perspective to our planning commission, it would be, uh, we'd be fortunate to have him, so thank you for you, for your application, sir, and for taking the time to be here tonight.
Okay, I think this is just going to require a yes or no, counselor?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's not really a nomination, so if somebody could move to a point, that probably is so.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'd move to a point.
Nice second.
Okay. Linda?
Okay, um, Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silber.
Hi.
Councilmember Hornick.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
And Mayor King.
Hi. Welcome.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Member, it's a small town.
I know.
Okay. And let's move on to number thirteen, Resolution twenty-four oh five, Resolution of the City Council, City of Beelton, California, regarding mid-year budget amendments for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and once again, this will be Finance Director Chanel Zamora.
Mayor King and members of the city council. Um, Scott, I actually, if you can put up the PowerPoint just to guide us.
Oh, is it not, is it open?
Yeah.
Oh, there it is.
On the desktop.
Okay, let's see, this is it.
So tonight, uh as part as our budget um process, we look at our budget quarterly, and this second quarter ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three is what we call the mid-year. So this is six months into the first fiscal year of our biannual budget, so we look at it more in that uh we look at what our year-to-date is versus what we had budgeted originally and what we had uh amended the first quarter, and then we analyze anything else in between that city council had authorized before to include in the budget. Um, so on attachment one, what I provided is just uh informational, showing all the funds and all the activity through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, just so you could get an idea of where we're at now. Um, and then what I uh included as well as part of the staff report is attachment two, and that's just to show us where we would be right now in five years with all the changes that we've made to the original budget. Um, on there, I listed some of the assumptions, but I just wanted to address that, and it's really good to look at this every six months rather than um during our biannual budget. Uh, and then I'll go ahead and focus more on the proposed budget amendments. Uh, next slide.
Excuse me, uh, Rose, is this showing up properly on our, on our feed? Okay, thank you.
So just uh as an overview, uh, the proposed budget amendments increase projected revenue by two hundred eight thousand four hundred eight dollars. And the proposed increase to expenditures is one million four hundred sixty-five thousand five hundred seventy-six. Okay, the next one. Um, so like I mentioned, uh, this, this uh slide is just part of the staff report where it's, so this is all revenue, so it shows pretty much all our revenue sources um meeting our budget protect, projections. Uh, some that are lower just have to do with timing, uh, for example, the uh franchise fees, and the biggest one that stands out here is uh the three hundred ten, the three hundred ten percent increase in use of money on property. That's just because interest rates had gone up, so from the uh time that we adopted the budget originally back in June of twenty-twenty-three, we've seen that increase. Okay, next one. So again, this, this slide just focuses on what increased in, what is the proposed increase in the general fund as far as revenue? Uh, we are proposing an increase, and I do apologize, I have the wrong number there, but it's one hundred eighty-four thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollar increase to recognize the CDPG grant the city received for the renovation of um this existing library for the uh senior center. Okay, next one. Uh, now focusing on the general fund expenditures, the total proposed budget amendments for the general fund is one million four hundred, four hundred forty-two thousand fifty-three dollars. And I I won't go into detail on what changed on this one, but the majority of that increase is about one point three million dollars in capital improvement proj- project increase. Next one. Project increase. Next one. Um, again, this is just from your staff report showing your year-to-date activity. Uh, and I've highlighted some departments that have exceeded the fifty percent. Uh, just briefly, we'll go over the non-departmental. Most of those are annual operating contracts that we pay. Uh, so right now showing sixty five point sixty eight, but by the end of the fiscal year, we will be within budget. And the same thing goes for the library. We paid that in July. Uh, the public works streetlights, uh, it's a little bit over budget. Uh, mainly due to uh, electricity costs from PG&E. Um, we now have solar power on some of them and we've received uh, a bill that was retroactive. So that's a big portion of it and we're gonna monitor this um, as the year goes on and see if this requires a budget amendment. Uh, but comparing to our. Um, electricity costs to the prior two years, we have seen that this number has actually gone down. Since the installation of those streetlights. Uh, I mean, the second one, Public Works Park, uh, that one shows an increase. Uh, because in the last couple of months, we found that the Botanic Garden did not submit an invoice last fiscal year. For their contribution, so now this fiscal year, we're not only contributing twenty three, twenty four, but we're actually contributing twenty two, twenty three. So we have two fiscal years in there. Okay, next slide. So these, I'll just summarize um. All the changes, but these slides just say all, just um, show all the ge- uh, general ledger budget line items that were affected. By the proposed budget. Um, so if you recall, uh, July first twenty five. Yeah, twenty four, I think it was the council meeting, uh, city council approved a salary increase for full-time employees. Uh, so the departments that were affected were um. Shown here, uh, for example, city council, the increase of two thousand three oh two uh, was due to the employee salary increase. Uh, as well as, okay, well, the se- the second one, city manager, even though the city manager did not receive an increase. The recent, the proposed expenditure increase is two thousand seven hundred and ninety. Is because we have now hired an administrative assistant position. So ten percent of that position is being allocated to the city manager department and that's being reflected here. And then the second, the the third box, the city clerk human resources. That includes the salary increase for full-time employees and as well as the allocation for the administrative assistant position. Um, and then next one. So for the non- non-departmental, uh, the first budget increase of four thousand two hundred thirty five. Is to include the acquisition of the artificial Christmas tree for the visitors bureau. Uh, this one has been authorized by city council before, so we're just uh, putting it in the budget now. Uh, the next two have also been authorized by city council, um, and there for capital improvement projects. Uh, about one point three million, uh, so the O ninety two dash two two one is the Williston House renovation project. And the increase of one million one hundred twenty eight thousand four hundred forty one was due to the contract amount. Uh, for that particular project. And then the O ninety two 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 three is the um. Senior, uh, what's it called, seniors, the senior center, community outreach. Uh, renovation of this li- current library. Uh, so that, like I mentioned before, we uh, received a CDBG grant, which will offset this increase. Um, and then finance department, that thirty one thousand nine hundred seventeen includes the administrative assistant position. And the salary increase. So the administrative assistant is fifty percent allocated to the finance department, which is. Why it has the highest increase of all the departments. Um, and then the next one, uh, just a little background, we purchased a new conference room table and chairs. So this was a net of zero because we looked at other items in the budget that we could pull from. So part of that was the one below. Uh, so the, or the hourly employees. Hourly employee, uh, we are reduced that by two thousand two hundred thirty five to pay a portion of the. Conference table and chairs of two thousand five hundred eighty one. And this was because we had the savings of the vacant part-time administrative assistant that left in December. Next one. Um, and then recreation, uh, most of these are negative. Um, and that's because when the original budget was adopted, it assumed a full year of the uh, recreation. Coordinator position. That wasn't filled until later in the fiscal year, so there was some savings in there. So when I calculated the increase of the salary, it actually ended up being negative. Um, and then the second one is a new one. Uh, this is for a rollover of the unspent funds of the arts and culture. Uh, program. So last year we had unspent funds of nineteen thousand sixty nine dollars. So this would increase the hundred thousand dollar budget. And then the following two, again, it's a wash, uh, typically when we have to buy something that wasn't budgeted for. We'll transfer from another one. So the rec center had to purchase a laptop. So they gave up their office equipment budget and transferred over to computer equipment. Next one. Um, and then this next one, the five five two Public Works Park. I mentioned before, uh, why it was over budget, so now we're correcting it and we're proposing an increase of twenty seven thousand. Which was the amount that was due for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. And then the following increase of twenty seven thousand fifty three, uh, is. Due to the salary increases back in January and also for the administrative assistant position, which is als- also allocated. Into this department. And then this small decrease of three forty six is actually the difference of what was remaining for the purchase of the city um. Hall, conference, table and chairs. So again, I took it from hourly employees since she was no longer here. And the last general fund increase uh, is to the planning department, fifteen thousand three hundred sixty three. And this was due to the full-time employee salary increase. Okay, next one. So the wastewater fund is another fund that was affected by the salary increases. Uh, so this just gives you an overview of what your revenue um, expense budget would be with the proposed um. And the the change is zero because we're pulling from transfer reserves. Next slide. Again, this is from your uh, staff report, just shows your the year-to-date versus where we are now. And our revenues and expenses are all within budget. Next one. Uh, so tonight's proposed amendment to the revenue is a transfer from reserves of nine thousand two hundred eighty nine. To cover the portion of the salary increase. Next one. And this uh, proposed expenditure of nine thousand two hundred eighty nine is for the cost of the employee salary increase. Next one. And so water fund, again, this is due to the salary increase. Uh, you'll see that we are taking money from reserves and we're balancing the budget again uh, for a net of zero. Next one. And then year-to-date, um, all the set, the revenue and expenditures are within budget projections. Next one. And then uh, proposed increase to water revenue is a transfer of fourteen thousand two hundred thirty four from reserves. To cover the uh, increase in the full-time salary increase. Next one. And then uh, these accounts and the increase of fourteen thousand two hundred thirty four for the cost of the salary increases again. Next one. So um, this is really hard to see, but I just wanted to put it out there. Um, uh, cause as you recall, I mentioned that the non-departmental uh, expense. Uh, was to be increased by about one point three million. Uh, this shows that it's coming from the general fund into our capital improvement project. Budget, so it goes from nine point one to about ten point four. Um, and then you see now that we have the project two two three added. Um, I show zero and now we have one hundred eighty four thousand eight hundred eighty five. Next one. And then these are just the GL accounts that are associated with that. Uh, so for the CDBG project, um. We're gonna put ten thousand towards project management, one hundred seventy four thousand eight hundred eighty five for construction and improvement. And then uh, the construction of the Williman Ha- Williston House is one million one hundred twenty eight thousand four hundred forty one. Which reflects the cost of the um, contract awarded to Lincoln Inc. And then the second portion is showing that this is all coming from the general fund. Next one. Uh, so with that, uh, staff recommends that city council approve resolution number twenty four dash oh five. A resolution of the city council of the city of Beelton, California regarding mid-year budget amendments for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. And if you have any questions, I am uh, happy to answer them.
Okay, we'll bring it back to council and I I do have a question on page four fifty. And and you don't necessarily have to fly back there, I'll just read it off of here. It says Public Works Streetlights. And it says, original budget twenty three, twenty four is fifty thousand and then it said current budget fifty thousand. Um, and you said that there was a s- a discount or a reduction in that cost because of the solar panels. What what was, what was our, do you off the top of your head, Chanel, you know what a cost for that was before?
Not at the top of my head, but I have it in my folder when I was doing this analysis to show, um, let me see if I included it in here.
Be- because you're saying fiscal year-to-date is thirty six thousand, which is almost what we budgeted for that. But I just wanted to know if you had any comparison prior to the, prior to the solar panels.
No, I do not have it with.
Okay, I'll talk to you offline about that. Um, any other questions from council?
I have another question.
You wanna go back to? Which one? Go back to um, David on there. Online, okay, let me stop sharing. Alright, thank you. Yes, sir.
Uh, so Chanel, uh, just um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I just, I saw the uh, the Christmas tree budget allocation. And I thought that was a one-time cost that we had approved.
Um, it is, but it was not in the budget, so this will put it into the budget.
It's on a budget, as you said, an annual item or is?
No, it's just for this particular budget.
And then the other thing I was noticing is is a, is the wastewater treatment, um, and our water treatment fund. Our enterprise fund, uh, that is just running a deficit. Is that right?
Um, one was, which is wastewater, I believe, let me go back.
And I'll interject right here, we're gonna do a study on that, correct? Okay, so there's gonna be a study in the future, so that may.
Okay, I just want, but.
That may mitigate that.
Yeah, uh, as of right now, year-to-date, we're showing the wastewater, uh, negative one hundred seventy thousand five hundred seventy two.
Yeah, we're gonna do a wastewater study and a water study on that, John.
Uh, no questions, thank you. David?
No questions on my end.
Okay, anything, any input from the public? Anybody in public wants to speak on this item or we have anybody on the line? Check online, just to be sure, nobody online. Okay, nobody online. See, nobody online, I will, any anything else from staff? Nope, I will bring it back to council for possible motion or discussion.
Motion approved.
I'll second. Hey, Councilmember Hornick, Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silva.
Hi.
And Mayor King.
Hi, okay, let us move on to the city managers report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, a few items for you this evening. First and foremost, as uh. Uh, Councilmember Sanchez noted earlier, this Sunday, the seventeenth, is the annual Wine and Chili Festival here in Beelton. Um, you've all been, it's a great event, encourage everyone to come out and and take part. Um, the next day, Monday, the eighteenth, we're going to be holding a special planning commission meeting. Uh, to hold a planning commission workshop as part of the next phase of of discussion and public outreach on. Uh, the um, urban growth boundary update. And so at this point, uh, the information from the initial concepts has been online since the meeting of twenty second of last month. Um, and we will, uh, I will be, I am currently accepting public comments via email. And we'll continue to do that, we'll post all those comments online as soon as we receive them. Uh, but the next uh, stage is Monday where the planning commission will get an opportunity to take a look at that, at those concepts. And give me any feedback that they have immediately and they, I'm sure they can follow up with with further comments as they digest that material, so. Uh, the public is invited and encouraged to attend. If they cannot attend, they should be able to view that online on Monday and um.
Well, Mr. Contreras be there.
Um, he is new planning commissioner, I assume so. Um, we will um, en- encourage everyone to be there, Monday, uh, six o'clock, I believe. Um, and lastly, I need to uh, alert the city council to an issue that's been arising statewide. Um, uh, with the prevalence of Zoom being used for public meetings since the COVID nineteen pandemic has taken place. Uh, there was an initial increase um, shortly after cities started using Zoom and similar technologies. Of highly inappropriate activity being uh, uh, interjected into council meetings by people who are abusing the Zoom platform. Uh, we've seen that uh, rise again in recent months and some of the uh, some of the activity has been uh. Just atrocious, for lack of a better term. Uh, in an effort to avoid those sorts of disruptions and some council meetings across the state have actually been forced to shut down and stop meeting. Uh, during what, when these attacks were taking place. In an effort to uh, preclude this in the future, because we have not had a a a measurable. Uh, use of Zoom by the public, um, what we will do is we will still use, uh, we will broadcast the meetings. Via our website and via the YouTube channel that the city has. Uh, the Zoom platform um, will not be used a- as a, as a two-way uh, platform anymore. Uh, the ability for the the public to view the meetings online is there. If anyone has a a desire to speak to the council, they can show up at the meeting and speak. If they'd like to submit written comments, they can, they can. Submit written comments and in extreme circumstances, uh, we may be able to uh, uh, allow for a Zoom testimony. Here and there, again, that that'd have to be pretty um, unusual for that to occur. Uh, this is being done just to ensure that we have the ability to continue with our meetings moving forward and not have the the types of interruptions that are being. That have been seen throughout the state here lately. So just giving you a heads up of that planned change.
Will council members still be allowed to zoom in if necessary, if they're remote?
Yes, like so, um, like Councilmember Silva tonight. Would zoom in and there would be no Zoom comments from the public because he was, this was planned. And he posted the agenda at his location. Um, if it's one of the emergency circumstances, the new rules under the Brown Act. In those circumstances, the law would require us to allow uh, streaming comments. So we would, in in those circumstances, open Zoom back up for that night only. Thank you.
Well, back in the day, we used to just have people call in.
Yeah.
You can hear the whole, I I've done it before when I've been out of town. You call in, you know, and that eliminates people from being on Zoom altogether. And it serves the same purpose because you don't really need to, although we like to see you, David, you know, we don't have to. Okay, you can, we can do it on the phone.
Okay, go ahead, sir. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counselor?
Done.
Any questions for Scott?
Okay, I will conclude this meeting.
So our next meeting will be March twenty eighth, twenty twenty four.